Good morning, everyone. This is the special call county council meeting of Friday, July 28th. It is now 10:31. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Taverneck?
Present.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, and online.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, online.
Councilmember Howard? She's not online yet. Councilmember Glover?
He is absent.
Councilmember Dawson?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present, online.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Here.
Vice Chair McGowan?
Present, online.
Chairman Passamet?
Present.
You have a form.
Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. May I have a member of council make a motion and second to approve this agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard's online now.
Yes, she is. I did see that. Ms. Taverneck, you made the motion. Ms. Brown, you made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any question about today's agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next, I will ask for a member to offer a motion and second for an executive session that will be pursuant to South Carolina Code Sections 30-470A2 and 30-470A1 to receive legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client privilege and to discuss issues related to the employment of a person regulated by council, and there will be matters arising out of executive session. So move.
Second.
Mr. Dawson made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew made the second. Any questions? No questions. This will be adopted without objection, and we are now going to go into executive session. Our executive session will last no more than one hour.
Hi, I'm Jodi Hayward. I'm the executive director of the Port Royal Sound Foundation, and we are standing in our Maritime Center. This is a museum that we have available here for the community and our visitors. The Port Royal Sound Foundation opened the Maritime Center back in 2014 as a place for people to come and learn more about the Port Royal Sound, which covers over 50% of our area. The Port Royal Sound just infiltrates our community. You see it out in your backyard. You'll see it when you cross over bridges. You see it as you travel all over. And this Maritime Center is here to connect everyone to the waters that surround Beaufort The Maritime Center is here to connect our residents and our visitors to Beaufort County to this beautiful body of water that we have here that really saturates our landscape. And we look at educating people about the Port Royal Sound through the ecology. You see in this room, we've got so many animals that we are educating people about that live in the Port Royal Sound, but also we look at the history and the culture, as well as the art that's influenced by the Port Royal Sound, and all of the fun recreation that the Port Royal Sound provides to us all. So we created this wonderful, beautiful map of the Port Royal Sound to show people how close we are by water, but yet how long it takes to get to each other by driving. This map really shows how the Port Royal Sound saturates our landscape, and it shows the different systems, the different rivers that make up the Port Royal Sound. And it's just a beautiful way to demonstrate how close we are by water, but yet it takes so long to go from St. Helena Island around to Hilton Head by car. But it's a great -- this map is the largest map of the Port Royal Sound, and people just love being able to come in and see it and see how vast the Port Royal Sound is in our community. So the Maritime Center has so many great exhibits, and we talk about the sharks of the Port Royal Sound, or the dolphin that live here, or the horseshoe crabs and loggerhead sea turtles. So it's a place where people can really come and connect, and it's people of all ages. Kids love coming here. Adults, grandparents love to bring their grandchildren here. Lots of folks bring visitors to the area here. So it's a great place to connect. And one of our favorite customers are the school kids. So we get thousands of school kids here on school field trips where they come and learn about their environment, because a lot of kids don't have that opportunity to get out on the water. And so being here located right on the Port Royal Sound is so unique. And a successful field trip is one where the kids actually get a little pluff mud on them before they go back to school. So we get them out on our docks. They do activities with microscopes. They're doing art activities. So it's just really important to start young in learning about your environment, and we love that we have this resource here for the community. So in the Maritime Center, we focus on a lot of different things, the ecology and the history. This room is, we affectionately call the oyster room, because we have this huge, beautiful oyster table that was used for many years as a shucking table when folks worked here and were shucking oysters, and the oysters were being shipped off to other places. So we actually have a picture of our oyster table up on the wall in use. But this beautiful table, we're able to use and decorate with a lot of different artifacts that we're able to share with the community. But this beautiful exhibit in this room really talks about the history of crabbing and shrimping and oystering in this area. Lots of information. So many people come in here and really enjoy reading about the history of these different industries, and a lot of people know people in the pictures. So it's, you know, the fishing industry is so important to our community and has been for so many years, so it's a great way to share that with folks. And then also, we have our new Gullah Geechee exhibit, as well as our history timeline, which were a lot of fun to work on. Victoria Smalls helped us out so much with our Gullah Geechee exhibit, along with several other experts in the community, to be able to really talk about the history and the art and food, music, and language associated with the Gullah Geechee culture. And then also, this other exhibit, the timeline, The Waves of History, we're really trying to do a timeline that was really focused or that was really driven by the Port Royal Sound. So it's a -- we try to tell part of the story, but we don't want to tell all the story, because we want people to go out into the community and explore more about all of these different components and these people that are here in the history timeline. So it's a great place to start your journey. It's almost like a welcome center, you know, to the Port Royal Sound, to be able to come here, learn a little bit, and then go out into Beaufort County and learn more about all of these great things that our county has to offer. So another favorite space, especially with the kids, is our tank room. And in this room, we have so many wonderful animals that live in and around the Port Royal Sound. We have several reptiles, including alligators and snakes and our terrapins, but then also we have several tanks that have crabs and fish that are found in the Port Royal Sound. And this is such a great tool. This room is covered in exhibits, but also the live animals, which helps our naturalists and our volunteers to really educate our visitors, especially those school kids, about the animals that live here. So it's just a great opportunity to get up close and personal, but not too up close and personal, with the animals that live here. And then the room also has these great windows to be able to look at the sound and see the salt marsh and be able to connect with the surroundings here.
Hi, my name is Chris Kirair. I'm the Naturalist and Operations Coordinator for the Port Royal Sound Foundation. I've been with the foundation for about eight years, and as a naturalist and working for the foundation, I've done quite a bit. I participate in research programs in partnership with University of South Carolina in Beaufort, Audubon, South Carolina, as well as participate in education programs. We see school kids from kindergarten to college and even adult programs. We've done programs for most of the schools in the county, as well as schools from Columbia, even Hampton and Colleton County. We also run programs for University of South Carolina in Beaufort and OLE programs, so offshore lifelong learning. So we do quite a bit in the county as far as research and education goes. I also, for the foundation, help care for the animals in the foundation and help out with just various activities. It's been really fun working for the foundation for the past eight years. We've grown from a small Maritime Center with not much on the walls, and now if you go in, it's bustling on most days, getting upwards of 75 to 100 people on average, and seeing the walls filled with new exhibits. And we're constantly working on those new exhibits through opportunities from grants, from the county, and from other local entities like community foundations below country. We recently have just opened up our brand-new pavilion that's going to help us grow our education programs and our outreach into the community. So we're really excited about that. Our capacity has been limited by space, and now we've kind of opened that up, that space availability, so our capacity is definitely going to grow with that. Outside of just normal field trips, we also run summer camps that are usually, that are probably filled up by now. And right now, we have a lot of projects in the shoe, from new exhibits in the works to research being conducted alongside University of South Carolina in Beaufort. They are about to install long-term monitoring devices to look at water quality right here off of our docks, as well as I work with the Clemson Center for Watershed Excellence and DEHEC and their Adopt a Stream program. And I train citizens in the county to look at water quality, and they do that through personal monitoring off of either public locations or at their own private docks. Yeah, so if you even come out to the center on any day of the week, you're almost guaranteed to see dolphins jumping around in the water, splashing, popping up. We have a ton of bird species here, from wading birds to shorebirds. So those are really, you know, if you take the time to go outside for a couple minutes a day, you're bound to find something.
So the Port Royal Sound Foundation was, you know, our goals have really been to educate the community about the Port Royal Sound, but also to other areas that we focus on are research and conservation. So the Port Royal Sound Foundation, the Maritime Center, has been here almost nine years. years. And really, in those first years, we're really focused on the education piece, getting kids through here, having different classes and experiences for people of all ages. But then a couple of years ago, we started focusing more on the research. And with the help of many of our partners here in the community, being able to make an impact on the Port Royal Sound from a research point of view. We work with folks at South Carolina DNR, USCV, to really look at what kind of research has been done in the Port Royal Sound. What do we, what's the, what are the priorities? What do we need to do in order to improve what we know about the Port Royal Sound? And so, that has really been an area of focus for us in the past couple of years. And as we move forward, we want to move more into that area. We've got several different sort of research projects going on here on our campus. We also have a growing citizen science program, which is really incredible. And in fact, that's a place that the community can get involved by just contacting us and you go through a series of training to be able to, for us, to help us learn more about the water quality here in the Port Royal Sound. So, moving forward, we're going to continue to work hard on the education piece and to improve and do everything that we can. As far as research goes, we hosted, we have hosted a couple of research symposiums at the beginning of last year and this year, to really bring the experts to the table to discover, what do we know about the Port Royal Sound? What do we need to know as we move forward, which helps us to prioritize our efforts? We've also put out a couple of RFPs to be able to generate proposals from different researchers that we in turn then fund, so that more research is being done on the Port Royal Sound. Because it's imperative that we learn more about the health and the water quality and the species that live in the Port Royal Sound. Because, you know, the Port Royal Sound really drives our local economy here. It supports our, our, our property values. It supports our incredible tourism that we have here, and it supports our way of life. People come here because they want to be on the water, they want to enjoy fishing in our waters, and we want to keep these waters clean and healthy for generations to come. We want our kids to be able to enjoy going out on kayaks, or going out on boats, or fishing at one of our local docks here. So, it's important for us to really think about how we all have an impact on the Port Royal Sound, and what kind of decisions need to be made to be able to protect and preserve it for years to come. And so, really, moving forward, our goal moving forward are to keep connecting with people, get them through the Maritime Center, expose them to a different program, expose them to the Port Royal Sound, help them to understand how, how beautiful and how important it is, and really to learn as much about it as we possibly can, so that we're preserving it for years to come. We wouldn't be here without our partners. Beaufort County has been an incredible partner for us. South Carolina DNR has been a great partner, USCV. It's just so amazing to be able to work with these local partners, to have an impact on our community, and to provide a resource for our residents and for our visitors to learn about how special our place is. The Maritime Center is free to visit. We have ongoing programs for people to enjoy. School kids come to us, we go to them. We even have school kids coming to us from all over the region, because it is such an incredible place to visit. And so, we love being able to provide these opportunities to connect with the Port Royal Sound, and we want to continue doing that. And thank goodness, we have these great supporters, people who believe in what we're doing, and an amazing group of volunteers. We would not have the Maritime Center without our volunteers. They help us as docents in our museum, they help us with school field trips, they help us with cleaning our fish tanks. They're amazing. And we have over 100 volunteers who have helped us become who we are. And we'll continue to bring new ones in, and we love to be able to connect with them as well, because they're out there in the community, educating people themselves. So, it's just a, it's a great family atmosphere, and we love it when these families come in and the kids come in to the Maritime Center, and they see the big animals, and they see the fish tanks and the alligators, and they do our scavenger hunts, or they go out on the kayaks. It's just, it's a great way to, to connect with our local environment.
They would be the great killing machines of World War I. Most of casualties on the battlefields of World War I would come from artillery. So the world is seeing a huge change in artillery, and that's tied into changes in ships. We now have steel armored ships, they're all steam-powered. They are now equipped with these fine long-range guns, and they now become the dominant threat of the late 19th, early 20th century. This is the threat. The French and English would bombard cities like Cairo and reduce them to rubble because they were unable to defend them. So this is how the world was seeing the threat from this new technology. Big battleships are the threat of the era, and new guns and fortifications on the ground are what you have to have to defend against them. Following the Civil War, national strategy and emphasis in the United States shifted from recovery from war, and all of our coastal fortifications went into neglect. The military was busy taming the West, and coastal defenses became something that was no longer important. And the rest of the world, technology is moving forward, and they're developing these battleships, they're developing new high-quality artillery. And this is going on worldwide. And in 1885, President Grover Cleveland appointed Endicott Board. This was headed by Secretary of War Endicott, William Endicott. And the board would meet and issue a report in 1886, and they said the conditions of our coastal defenses were just unbearable, they cannot be allowed to stay like that. And they made recommendations for fortification and improvements. They identified 29 places that needed fortifications, and 11 of which were critical. In that list of 29, Savannah and Charleston are on the list, but Beaufort is not on the list. It'll take international events to bring Beaufort into the play of modern fort technology.
So the USS Maine was here on patrol and in the harbor, and while they were in the harbor several times, they entertained the local population. So, the merchants and the social leaders and the political leaders of Beaufort were invited to come have lunch with the captain of the ship, Captain Sigsby. And the officers got to know the people, the people got to know the officers. The crew, which was large, would go ashore on payday and make friends with everybody in town. So it was a very social arrangement between the towns, Port Royal and Beaufort, and the ship. So the Maine left here, it went and re-provisioned, it refueled in Key West, and then went the 90 miles across to Havana, into the harbor, and blew up.
This inflamed the already hot passions both in Cuba and here in the United States. At that point, somebody in the War Department realized that we had this big dry dock, the only dry dock in the South that could take on and repair these big capital ships that were in our navy. We were going to start operations against a power in the Caribbean, and this fort was totally undefended. And that's what put Fort Fremont on the map. We had to have a fort here to defend the coaling station, and especially this big dry dock, as well as this fine harbor that's here.
And of course, that event, which killed 300 or more sailors on the ship, was very much followed by the local news media and very much lamented by the many friends that the crew had made here. The destruction of the USS Maine was a personal matter to Beaufort and to Port Royal Sound. And of course, it was the Spanish-American War and the attempt to defend this harbor again, which led to the creation of Fort Fremont. The United States declared war on Spain in April, 1898.
And by early May, we had temporary batteries in place here, submarine mines were in place, and in the summer, they would actually place the mines across the Beaufort River behind me. The temporary batteries were a temporary expedient. They were located to my left, about 1,000 yards. They immediately began construction of what would become Fort Fremont, the large batteries with housed the large guns. Battery four nats, the rapid-fire guns, the smaller battery was completed by June of 1898.
In 1898, everybody in town went to war. They had a naval militia unit, South Carolina Naval Militia Unit, and they were absorbed by the Navy. Many of them ran tugboats from here to New York to Key West, which was the principal support base, Tampa and Key West, for the US Army operations in Cuba.
Peace was declared by the end of 1898, and the remainder of Fort Fremont would not be finished until early 1899, and the first soldiers would arrive from the regular army at that point, in March 1899.
Well, Fort Fremont was named for Major General John Fremont. He was actually a local boy, so to speak. He was born and grew up in Savannah, Georgia, just south of us, and went to college, in the College of Charleston, just north of us in Charleston. He served in the Army. He served in the Army, and primarily initially as an explorer, as Army forts were generally named for Army officers. And he was connected locally. This is more than likely why the fort was named for him.
The fort was constructed on a site directly across the river from the Paris Island Naval Station. And the site selected was 170 acres, which included the two artillery batteries. Fort Fremont, of course, had Battery Fornace and Battery Jessup. But then adjacent to the battery site was an administrative quadrangle, a very typical military-type administrative square.
We are sitting in the number-three gun position of a three-gun battery, Battery Jessup, which had three 10-inch disappearing carriage, large-caliber guns, breech-loading guns. Their purpose was to engage the warships that might be entering the harbor and Port Royal Sound. We're here now at the second battery that was part of Fort Fremont. This is Battery Fornance, was named for an Army officer that was actually killed during the Spanish-American War, during the Battle of San Juan Hill. Battery Fornance mounted two British-made 4.72-inch Armstrong Quickfire guns. They were called Quickfire because they loaded, were loaded with a complete cartridge, and in time of action, they could fire four to six rounds per minute. The purpose of Battery Fornance was to defend the minefield, which was the other component of the Endicott Coast artillery or coast defense system. A minefield with controlled mines, controlled meaning that they were connected electrically to shore and could be fired on command from shore. That control station would have been probably shared with the plotting room. And in order to protect the minefield, obviously, an enemy would want to interfere with that, might send vessels, small ships, in here at night to try to interfere. And this battery would take those vessels under fire if there was some, there was suspected that they were doing something to interfere with the mines, such as pulling up the cables and cutting those.
The Endicott-era fort was a formidable technology. It represented state-of-the-art technology, defense technology of its time against the state-of-the-art threat, which would be the battleship.
The life for the soldiers at Fort Fremont was disciplined and regimented. They even had, meal times were specified lengths of time, 15 minutes for lunch, 15 minutes at breakfast, 20 minutes at supper. They had to practice their skills. They were training and doing maintenance constantly. If you can imagine, with these big guns, they had to have skills in, and practice the skills in artillery, mine-laying, signaling, which involved, in our case at Fort Fremont, the use of the fire-control tower, which was a pretty sophisticated and advanced signaling technique. Then they also had to practice the typical military skills, marching and drilling, small arms fire, first aid, and so forth. In addition to that, they also had, participated in athletics. They had physical training, P.T., and they also had sports teams. So this was to keep them physically fit so that they could continue their duties, because they were, it was pretty rigorous at Fort Fremont.
When eventually the decision was made to move the dry dock and the coaling station and the Navy station up to Charleston, then this fort no longer became significant. There was nothing left here that was to be protected. And at that point, 1911, the last troops were transferred out, and the fort was closed.
In 1901, the mayor of Charleston and the United States Senator Pitchfork Ben Tillman from South Carolina wanted this, to move from Beaufort County to Charleston County, because there are more votes in Charleston County. And the mayor wanted the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the Navy to dredge the harbor in Charleston, because battleships in those days required 26 feet of water. Charleston's natural harbor is 15 feet of water. Port Royal is 30 feet of water. In order for Charleston to sustain its port, its commercial port, it had to dredge the harbor. Well, if they could get the Navy up there, they'd get the Corps of Engineers to dredge the harbor. That was the play. And the play for Pitchfork Ben Tillman, the U.S. Senator in 1900, was that he'd get a whole lot more votes from the largest city in South Carolina. So it was a political, commercial operation, and they moved the Navy, and it was done boom like that.
The fort did its job, a deterrent for anybody that wished to attack these. It provided protection. In fact, the whole Endicott system, although never challenged in this era here in the United States, provided some 300 major guns, coastal guns, to protect major areas, and left the United States at the beginning of the 20th century with as well-defended coastline as anyplace in the world.
I would just like to say that it's a magnificent artifact of an era. And it's an era that has been neglected, the turn of the 20th century, the naval station across the river here. And so it's a piece of history that's disappearing, and the Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have preserved it for the use of the public and as a memorial to that moment in history.
Fort Fremont closes a 350-year story of homeland security addressing European imperialism in the 19th century. It's a tale of how geography, technology, and national security creates a transition for America to become a global power. It's also a wonderful snapshot of America in the beginning of the 20th century. The Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have a valued partnership, working in tandem to preserve the fort's integrity and promote the historical, natural, and cultural aspects of the fort. Most important, we're always looking for creative ways to enhance visitor experience.
It's civilization versus nature's fury. Raging blizzards bury cities under thousands of tons of snow. Howling hurricanes tear apart coastal communities with wind and rain. And flash floods wipe entire towns off the face of the earth. As the skies clear, people begin to pick up the pieces. But after the storm, insidious damage is still being done. Our most vital natural resource is under assault, our nation's waters.
We're at the Chattahoochee Nature Center, and we're trying to find out what a watershed is. First victim. I need you to tell me what a watershed is. Do you have any idea?
Watershed?
A watershed? Where people go to the bathroom?
Sweating, I guess.
Something to do with sweating?
Uh-huh.
Like after you run, when you...
You perspire, yeah.
And then you shed it?
Uh-huh.
We wanted to ask you if you knew what a watershed was.
A watershed?
Yeah.
Is it kind of like the rain?
Do you know what a watershed is?
A shed that holds water.
Come here for a second, I want to ask you something. Do you know what a watershed is?
No.
No? Do you have any idea? What do you think it has something to do with?
Uh, I don't know.
What a watershed is? Yeah. That's just a drain pool, I guess you'd say, or the drain area that's where the water, the rainwater drains into the river.
Correct, that's a great answer.
A watershed is that area of land that drains to a body of water, be that if it's a river, a stream, the ocean, an estuary, a bay. Wherever you live, drains to some water body, and you live in a watershed, so everyone lives in a watershed.
And in this modern industrial age, our water sources are becoming more contaminated with each passing year.
The biggest water quality problem that we have in the nation today is polluted runoff.
All water east of the Continental Divide drains to the Atlantic, while water west of the Divide flows to the Pacific. And one drop of rain can cross many different watersheds along the way. As runoff flows into rivers, streams, and storm drains, the water picks up trash, dirt, bacteria, toxic chemicals, and fertilizers, creating a soup of pollutants that is extremely hazardous to the environment. And the consequences of polluted runoff exist worldwide.
The U.N. estimate is that there's about a billion people on the planet right now who don't have adequate access to fresh water.
97% of all water on Earth is salty ocean water. Of the remaining 3%, it's fresh. Over 2/3 is frozen in glaciers and polar ice. That leaves less than 1% of all the planet's water for our use.
I predict in the future that some of the U.S. water needs are going to come through pipeline because we have just overused our supply.
To address the complex threats facing U.S. water resources, the Environmental Protection Agency recommends adopting a watershed approach.
We're trying to reconnect some of the river.
It's a method that looks at each watershed for its own unique set of environmental challenges and solutions.
In many cases, people mistakenly identify large discharge pipes in the water as the problem. But that may not be the problem. It may be coming from agricultural runoff. It may be coming from stormwater runoff over parking lots and impervious surfaces. Every watershed is different, and you need to look at each watershed in its own terms and then think systematically about how you remediate, how you clean up that watershed.
In California, the Santa Monica Bay watershed drains a dangerous amount of polluted runoff after each storm.
When it rains, literally, the whole residue of urban living ends up getting washed into the storm drain system and ends up going straight into the bay on Santa Monica Bay's beaches with no treatment whatsoever.
It's actually like a giant toilet flushing, because all of the pollution, the dog mess has been building up and building up and building up. When it rains, it just flushes into the storm drain and goes directly into the surf.
In 1996, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission proved there was a link between the contaminated runoff in the Santa Monica Bay and reports of illness afflicting people who swim there.
What we did find was at the outlets of storm drains, no matter where they were, up and down the bay, if there was a flow of runoff into the surf zone, those people that were swimming in those areas definitely experienced higher incidences of illnesses.
The pollutants in the water affect surfers because we're actually the indicator species with all the pollutants. When we are in the waters, we're ingesting it through our skin and our mouth. Even if people don't take a swallow of water, it's still getting into our systems, our ears, any orifice in your body. And it causes infections, it can cause colds, sore throats, at the very least.
I wouldn't want to swim in, you know, water unless it's got those diseases in there, you know, just floating around, making more diseases.
I've seen it pretty much as bad as it can be. I've seen crap floating out in the water, literally.
Generically, we call it fecal coliform. More specifically, you might know of it as E. coli, Salmonella, or Enterococcus, whatever's in poop.
There's times when it tastes funky, for sure.
Every day, the city and county of Los Angeles perform a battery of tests to keep the public informed about water quality in the Santa Monica Bay. Cesar Arzadon begins the monitoring process each morning by taking a series of coastline water samples. Then it's back to the lab for analysis.
Most of the bacteria that you're going to see, it comes from feces. And when you put it under the UV light, you're going to see a different color. It's a fluorescent sign that there is a bacteria, and then it's called E. coli. That one definitely is feces from animals, or it could be humans also.
The results are reported to the Health Department, and beach warnings are posted as necessary.
The number of beach postings has decreased, and 85% of the beaches that have been monitored in California have received either A or B grades. And that's significantly different than four years ago.
But while progress is being made in California, the harmful effects of polluted runoff are a growing concern everywhere. So what can the average person do to help reduce pollution in our watersheds?
How you apply pesticides or not in your garden, how you wash your cars, making sure that you don't throw cigarette butts out onto the street.
Do not dump things on the ground, especially oils or any chemical pollutants. Pick up after your dogs. A lot of people don't realize how important that is. And just be a conscientious citizen, and don't leave anything on the ground.
I think one person can make a difference. And it needs to make the difference. If not you, who?
Coming up.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
Can the Gulf of Mexico be saved from polluted runoff? It was a flood of apocalyptic scale. 26,000 square miles of the Lower Mississippi Valley inundated by water, more than 200 lives lost, and 600,000 people displaced from their homes. The flood of 1927 was the most disastrous in U.S. history, and its effects are still felt today. After the flood of '27, massive levees were put in place. And while they helped protect the Lower Mississippi River basin from flooding, the levees and other human activities would ultimately harm the watershed in unforeseen ways. The Gulf state of Louisiana is the terminus of the Mississippi River, the mighty watershed that drains 41% of the area of the lower 48 states into the Gulf of Mexico.
We receive water from as far away as Montana, Michigan, to Pennsylvania, Ohio, Iowa. All those waters drain right past this area, right here.
But by the time all that water enters the Gulf, it has accumulated enough contaminants from polluted runoff to create an enormous hypoxic zone, an area of water lacking in vital oxygen.
The size of the low-oxygen zone in the Gulf of Mexico is about 9,000 square miles. That's equal to the size of the state of New Jersey.
The shortage of oxygen is killing fish and other sea life and could potentially have a devastating effect on the regional economy.
We are the largest navigation port in the United States. We are the second-largest in the world. We have the largest fisheries in this country.
When we was crabbing, a lot of tons of all our crab, we dead, and we can't even sell them.
The reason hypoxia should be of concern to most citizens in this nation is because it's a sign. It's a sign of the degradation of our water resources. We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
If you're going to have an ecological disaster caused by the offshore hypoxic areas, then that absolutely translates into an economic disaster.
So what exactly is causing this dead zone in the Gulf? Hypoxia develops when an area of water receives excess pollutants, primarily an overabundance of nutrients, which produce large algae blooms that die off and lead to low oxygen. And since the Mississippi gets fed by tributaries that flow through 31 states, that adds up to a staggering volume of contaminated runoff.
You have drainage into the Gulf of Mexico from the Ohio River, the Mississippi River, and the Missouri River. Yet each of those three major river systems are watersheds in and of themselves with their own challenges and their own problems.
The Mississippi River has always delivered a lot of water. And that hasn't changed over the centuries. What's changed is the amount of nutrients in that water.
In fact, the Mississippi's nitrogen levels in the Lower Mississippi River have tripled since the 1950s. And the growing hypoxic zone off the Louisiana coast contains the disturbing evidence.
It's like a rusty color, stanky, rotten-looking. You see fish just swimming sideways, gasping for air and stuff like that. And when you pull up the nets, not one shrimp alive, all dead, orange. The fish, they're rotten, like melting away and stuff like that. Can't breathe, stuff. And it's just rotten.
This is just a fact of life, the way we treat our water systems because we use them as our garbage dumps.
We use them to dilute our pollutants and things like that. And it flows downstream. I believe the statistic is that if you're in New Orleans, the water that is going by you has passed through a human gut something like three or four times before it gets to you.
Incredibly, Louisiana boasts a natural resource that removes pollutants from the draining Mississippi: the once abundant wetlands.
Plants that grow in wetlands produce these wonderful filters for everything that is coming into them. They trap sediment, they tem the chemicals. And what leaves the wetlands is much, much cleaner water.
Wetlands also provide an important habitat for birds and other wildlife. Sadly, the Louisiana wetlands are quickly disappearing.
Coastal Louisiana has lost about 1.2 million acres of wetlands in the last 100 years.
When we levied off the Mississippi, it cut off the Mississippi River water from the marshes.
In addition to the levees, a network of man-made navigation channels is also compromising the wetlands by allowing salt water to seep into the marshes.
Once that salt water travels up these channels and overflows the banks of these channels out into freshwater systems such as the Cypress Swamp, that salt water sits out there around the roots of these trees and kills them. They cannot survive salt water, they're freshwater plants.
Eliminating the hypoxic zone will take more than saving our wetlands. Reducing nutrient runoff in the Mississippi River watershed is the heart of the problem. It's an issue involving over half the states in the nation and a vast array of industries, particularly farming, which uses nitrogen-rich fertilizer to grow its crops.
Fertilizers are helping the United States produce the food for the world. But there is such a thing as overuse.
There are scientists who have done the analyses and predict that you could reduce fertilizers by about 12% without reducing crop production and see a significant decrease in the amount of nitrogen going into the Mississippi River.
Experts say the first key to changing behavior is raising public awareness.
We all live downstream of somebody and we all live upstream of somebody. So what somebody else does in their watershed affects the water that I receive. And what I do in my watershed affects the water that somebody else receives downstream.
If we don't clean up our act, our water resources, which we simply cannot live without, will be ruined. Coming up. Can the water supply for 9 million New Yorkers be saved from the ravages of polluted runoff? In January of 1996, one of the most devastating winter storms in history slams the East Coast. Two feet of snow dumps on New York and throughout the Northeast corridor. Schools, airports, and roads are shut down. By the time it's over, the blizzard and resultant flooding caused $3 billion in losses and 187 lives are taken. And in the Catskill Mountains of upstate New York, the snow melt triggers another potentially devastating crisis. Stormwater runoff contaminated with trash, dirt, fertilizers, and pesticides from nearby farms and communities threatens the freshwater supply. And the Catskill system of reservoirs is vitally important for it is the biggest watershed of New York City, providing drinking water to over 9 million people.
The miracle of the city's water supply system is largely unknown to most New Yorkers. You ask people, "Where does the water come from?" Often people shrug their shoulders and say, "New Jersey."
I figured that we were probably our own separate water system then from upstate. I'd rather be drinking water from upstate than the Hudson River.
I don't know that most people are aware of how large the problem is and how close to crisis many of our water supply systems are.
To preserve the purity of the reservoirs and enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Environmental Protection Agency presented the Big Apple with two options: Either build and maintain a $6 billion facility to filter all of the city's tap water or fund a $1 billion program to protect the watershed from polluted runoff.
When it comes to our investment in clean air and clean water, preserving open space, fixing antiquated sewage treatment plants, we can't wait. It doesn't get any less expensive, it gets more expensive.
With the historic Watershed Agreement of 1997, an unprecedented upstate-downstate partnership was forged to protect the New York City water supply.
The Watershed Agreement is saving New York City billions of dollars.
The plan includes purchasing and preserving 355,000 acres of undeveloped watershed land, the upgrading of sewage treatment plants, and the protection and restoration of stream corridors.
What we're looking at here is a main tributary, the Asopus Creek. During flooding, we were seeing a lot of sediment coming out of the stream. The clay gets into the water column and it becomes very turbid and then it makes it very difficult to treat and clean that water. So from a water quality perspective, we're very concerned about erosion.
The program also provides funding for farmers that implement agriculture management practices.
Well, we have a very exciting program with the Watershed Agricultural Council where we are working with local farmers. We look at how they're handling the animals so that the runoff associated with manure, fertilizer, and that farm activity isn't getting into the streams around our reservoirs.
This water here is basically the water you're going to be drinking down in the city. And I feel I've got a responsibility to try my best to keep it clean for when it gets down there. It used to be when it rained here on the farm, the water that ran away from the back of the barn here was full of mud, manure, and it would just run brown and right into the stream. Two years ago, we would spread every day. We'd have to take it out, spread it on the fields. If the snow was deep, we'd spread it on the snow and unfortunately, if the ground was froze when the snow melted, the nutrient value of it for fertilizer was gone and wound up down in the reservoir.
With New York City funding, a secure, above-ground steel tank that can hold 400,000 gallons of manure was installed on the Meadowbrook Farm.
That's enough storage for six months of the year. Now we can store it, spread it when it'll do the most good to us for fertilizer and we don't have to spread it every day.
I worked with Tim on the plan to develop the improvements we're going to make. Plan really belongs to the farmer and it's a collaboration of their ideas and what technical advice we can bring to the program. But the farmer makes the decision.
It's a program that seems to make everybody happy.
Here's to the farmers who are working so hard to make sure we've got clean water to put in our coffee.
To guarantee the city's water supply is fresh at the tap, comprehensive tests are performed by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, both in the lab and at over 1,000 sampling stations throughout the city.
New York City has probably one of the most extensive water quality monitoring programs in the nation, if not the world.
We're sampling every day, 365 days a year. I've been drinking this water for 53 years. Nothing else. That's water in the world. New York City, straight from the tap to my lips.
Coming up. The future of our water supply remains at risk, but there's something everyone can do to help protect it. Find out how, next. To keep our watersheds free of pollutants will require the actions of every citizen, community, and business.
Paved concrete surfaces, asphalt, parking lots, sidewalks. The question is, do we need to have as many as we do? Because to the extent that you have too much impervious surface, the water is not retained on site. It doesn't soak into the ground. It runs off, picks up speed, carries pollutants and contaminants into the water body.
One strategy for preventing stormwater runoff is occurring at the new Ford Rouge Center in Dearborn, Michigan. This remodeled truck plant is covered by a green roof the size of eight football fields. Planted with a porous ground cover, it reduces the amount of polluted runoff released into the watershed.
The thing that tends to get the most attention is the 10-acre green roof. But that's really just part of a philosophy that if an area does not have to be paved or built upon, it's going to be green space.
And communities are also implementing green space strategies, such as rain gardens.
They sloped the lot in such a manner that all the flow goes towards this landscaping where basically the polluted runoff can percolate into the ground and get filtered and then going straight onto the street into the storm drain system and really a very simple approach to cleaning up our runoff in urban areas.
But perhaps the most powerful course of action is individual participation.
People need to take responsibility for the state of our waters and water conservation is one area where they can do that as a committed citizen. All those things your mom told you. Take a short shower. Don't let the water tap run while you're brushing your teeth.
Taking your household hazardous waste to a cleanup and recycling day. Don't wash your car on the streets and put all those suds down into the drain.
When you change your used motor oil, you don't dump it into the street. Everybody's got to clean up after their pets. Obviously, that's a big concern. Fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides. Make sure you don't use them anytime there's any chance of rain coming up in the near future. When you're irrigating your lawn and your garden, make sure that you're not overspraying and causing all those chemicals to end up getting into the storm drain system. The only way we're going to solve the problem is if everybody does their part.
We all live in a watershed. We all have an impact on our environment. And we must all play a role in the protection and restoration of our valuable water resources. To learn more about how you can get involved and to get a free brochure called "After the Storm", visit epa.gov/weatherchannel.
Dr. Gates, tell me a little bit about the timeliness of the Reconstruction Series. Why now?
12 years of black freedom followed by an alt-right rollback, a president immediately following Abraham Lincoln, who refused to renounce white supremacy, a conservative Supreme Court that effectively undid the power of the 14th and 15th Amendments. What's that sound like?
Contemporary times.
Contemporary times. So it was obvious that we could teach our fellow citizens in America about the perilous moment in which we're living by analogy through telling the story of Reconstruction and its rollback. And I first started thinking about it after the horrible murders of Reverend Clementine Pinckney and the other innocents at Mother Manual Church. Because the justifications that Dylann Roof summoned for his actions were very reminiscent of racist rhetoric about black people immediately following the Civil War and following Reconstruction. And I was shocked. It's almost like a horror movie when you think that the vampires dead and all of a sudden they come up out of the casket. And you think, "Damn, I thought I put a stake in your heart." I thought that the worst and most pernicious, heinous aspects of anti-black white supremacy were long gone and that I was naive about that. And we've seen a rise in hate speech, anti-Semitism, anti-gay attitudes. And people, when people become frightened, particularly about their economic future, they look for...
The executive session. We will have items as a result of our executive session. As a result of the information we received today and the information we received on Monday, and based on discussions and deliberations of this information, I'm going to ask for the following motions. Motion number one is a motion to terminate Eric Greenway with cause and to remove him from office of Beaufort County Administrator effective immediately. May I have such a motion, please? Mr. McKellen, you're on mute, please unmute.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion.
I will second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover? Oh, he's absent. Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion number two is a motion to appoint the acting county administrator, John Robinson, to the position of interim county administrator while we conduct a search for the next county administrator. May I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Tavernick makes the motion.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard seconds. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mark, yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion number three. A motion that we ask the law firm that will be hired to investigate the matters we identified on Monday, those four specific ones, and to investigate the personnel matter we discussed today in executive session. May I have such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mr. Lawson?
You're breaking up. Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Finally. Today, we have taken additional action with regard to Mr. Greenway's status with the Beaufort County government. We have voted to terminate him for cause. This still is a personnel matter and we are advised by our legal counsel that we cannot talk about it yet. We will talk about it when we are told we can. In the meantime, we can assure the public that the investigations that were described in the prior special meeting and which we discussed at length during yesterday's meeting of the Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee will continue exactly as discussed and planned. The findings of these investigations will be presented to council and the public at a future date. There being no further action, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.